Good evening. Welcome, everybody, to a special city council meeting for a budget hearing. And especially grateful and want to point out that we do have all of our department heads here. Thank you for being here. We really, really appreciate your presence as well as all of your work throughout this entire year. I know sometimes it's hard to just get caught up in the day-to-day operations. COVID was a big deal. Then this year is like, yeah, we're going to get everything done. And then bureaucracy just kicks in. You think, ah, what are we getting done? But in reviewing this budget and the comprehensive accomplishments that each of you have accomplished together has been actually really impressive. And I've been just really grateful for the hard work and dedication and persistence that you have done in making progress for Canyon City despite workforce problems, hyperinflation, and all the other things. You guys just have an amazing resilience and dedication to serving Canyon City. And thank you so much for your time. And Tammy, to you and your team for putting together this amazing budget. Thank you so much. And with that, we do need to do a roll call. Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith, absent. Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Protam Hammer?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. I am now officially opening the public hearing for the 2023 budget hearing. And we'll turn the time over. Is it to you first, Ryan, or Tammy?
We will turn the time over to Tammy.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. So we did present to council by October 1st, the proposed budget. That was sent in hard copy. And then we do have it available electronically for the community to view. One item is, when you're looking at our budget and our budget message, you see that we are proposing that we use a substantial amount of reserves. Those reserves have been from projects that may not have happened this year that were budgeted, or excess revenues. I'm looking back to 2018. So I went back four years. And each of those years, we had budgeted the use of reserves. There were only, there were a couple of years that the funds actually used the reserves versus contributing additional revenue. So that's something, you know, for council, council to keep in mind. For instance, in 2021, general fund had anticipated using $1.6 million in reserves. We ended up putting $4.9 million in reserves, but $2 million of that was from our ARPA funding. And so then, when we get items such as the ARPA funding, it's restricted and it goes into the reserves. We have to use it for certain things. With that, we are allocating our ARPA funds out that have not been spent. So that is, that is coming out of reserves. So I just wanted to start with that to let council know that, yes, we, we are anticipating using reserves. We do also maintain a certain percentage of reserves as addressed in our financial management policy. And when we're preparing the budget, we make sure that we are meeting those, those policies.
Is it okay to ask questions as we go along?
Um, you can, yes.
Oh, so, just so I understand for sure what, what you just said, Tammy, the, the, our ARPA funding, unanticipated dollars went into reserves, but when we pull them out, we're decreasing our reserves. And so, but it's an in-and-out type situation, as opposed to, we've got this much money in the bank, so to speak, and we're starting to reduce that amount that we're, that we have as our nest egg, so to speak?
Well, so with the ARPA funds, for example, with that, that money went into the bank. And it is sitting there until we spend it. Once we spend it, it's no longer in there. So it is depleting it. So when we actually do spend reserves, we are depleting them. We are reducing them.
So, but, but for the purpose of the public, they don't see the credit side of that so much, that we're putting this money into reserves, and, but then appropriately withdrawing it from reserves, and that sounds like we're depleting that?
Correct, yes. So it may have happened in different years.
Can you put a subcategory in there that has ARPA funding, so it differentiates it from like the rainy day fund reserves versus ARPA funding that has to be accounted for and is earmarked?
So, let me find which page it is. Hold on a moment. When we look, if you look at page 19 of our budget, and this would be in general fund, it actually shows you what our reserves are being used, or what they're classified for. And so in 2022, you will see that there was, I'm trying to make sure we tell you the right, the right one. Under, there, it actually does say ARPA. So in 2021, it had 2.1 million in ARPA. And then we budgeted that we would only have 601,000 left in '22, because we thought we were actually going to be able to spend some of the items. We're actually going to have, we're estimating about a million sitting in there. And this is just the general fund side. And then in '23, we'll have depleted it all. So we do try to identify some of those larger items in our fund balance classifications.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for pointing that out. While we're on the subject of ARPA, I did notice on some of the spending, though not all of it was earmarked like ARPA, it would be nice even if there was like an asterisk or something, or grant money. Sometimes it just has like capital expenditures or whatever, and it just looks like it's coming out of the general fund. It'd be nice to have something that shows that parts of it is actually coming from ARPA or other grant money, too. So it's not just direct tax, Canyon City taxpayer money paying for it. In some places, it is that way, but not all of them.
Yeah, we, we've tried to identify as many places where ARPA funding is coming out. If we have that opportunity, we, you know, we can try and designate that.
So with that, we'll go ahead and get started with our presentation. On the screen, you see our comparison between the 2022 budget and the 2023 budget for our revenue. In '22, we had budgeted 38.7 million. We are anticipating 42.5 million in 2023. The reason for that, you can see that there is a large increase in our intergovernmental, which would include grants. And so we do have potential grant funding identified, and that may or may not happen. If those grants do not come through, we will not, of course, be spending that revenue. The total expenses for 2023 are $63 million, 63.7 million. Our operating expenses are slightly up from 2022. The largest increase you will see is in our capital outlay, which is showing approximately $10 million, $10 million more. Of that, we do have $4 million identified in water that could be potentially grant-funded.
Go ahead, Emily.
Thanks. Could you just clarify the transfer outline on that chart?
Yes. So the transfers, the transfer out is basically when we're taking the money from general fund or water, stormwater, moving it to other funds. We do have identified $1.2 million coming from general fund to go to the Quality of Life Fund. We did not do that transfer this year, because the project didn't happen. That was for the broadband. So there's $1.2 million moving there. There's also $750,000 coming from the Parks Improvement Fund, going into the Quality of Life Fund to help with the funding of their new, their new building. So that accounts for, what, 1.9, 1.9 million of that. We also have transfer, our operating transfers from stormwater to general fund, and then water to general fund. And then we have what is called our excess special improvement fund, which transfers approximately $15,000 into general fund.
On this chart, this is total budget, right?
Yes, that's total budget.
So this is general fund, water, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess transfer out to me isn't 100% clear. If this is all the funds together, where's that money going?
It's going into the various, into the other funds. So when you look at the individual budget summary statements, you will see that there's either a positive, there'll be a positive for a transfer in and a negative for a transfer out on the budget statements.
Yeah, I guess I just am not, maybe everyone else understands, so I won't stay on it. But if this is all of our funds together in these figures, then why isn't that just zeroed out there somehow?
Because this is only the expense side of it. It is not the revenue side of it.
Gotcha. Thank you.
On general, in general fund, you'll actually see that in 2023, we're showing approximately $2 million less in revenue. That is primarily because of our intergovernmental. We are not anticipating getting the $2 million again from ARPA. And so that is the key change in the intergovernmental. And it is anticipated that general fund will receive an operating transfers from other funds of approximately $913,000, and also proceeds from financing of $690,000, and use approximately nine, nine million of reserves. With the use of the reserves, the city is still estimated to maintain nearly 23% of unassigned fund balance as a percentage of operating expenses. So that means that we still have 23% of reserves that aren't assigned to, to anything. It's available for our operating expenses. And the use of the fund balance accounts for the transfer of approximately $2 million of, of the ARPA funds. So when you're looking at that nine million, two million of it is ARPA. So we will be going through general fund as each of the sections. The first section is general government, which includes like-
Emily, you can go ahead and now, just go ahead and speak up.
Oh, okay. We're going to be informal.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. I, I had a question. I don't mean to interrupt too often, and I won't, but I have a question on the capital outlay line for 2023, where it's 877,000. On this slide, is that supposed to be a total of the capital on the right there? Because I came out with-
No, I do not have everything identified on there.
Okay. So there's-
A few little-
10,000 maybe of something else. So is it smaller items then, and different?
All of the capital items that total the 877,000 are identified in our capital improvement plan, back on page 215. And so in, in that, that 10,000 is going to be, well, there's 20, there's $20,000 that is anticipated to have to go into the Royal Gorge Sinking Fund, and we typically put that as capital. And so I do not have that identified on, on the screen as a capital item. But general government includes our administration, the city clerk, the city council, elections, human resources, IT, our building department, our facilities department, planning, economic development. So when you're looking at general government, these are the departments that this is, that this is funding. The decrease from 2022 to 2023 is primarily because we had ARPA funds budgeted to spend in '22, and we do not have that budgeted in, in 2023 in those departments. Court costs, courts is funding, the court management system, which a portion of that will be funded by ARPA, by ARPA. IT calls, IT equipment calls for a server replacement. Maintenance, that capital includes carpet replacement, asphalt repair, and sealers for our parking lot. Building department is requesting a new pickup. Administration capital includes the ERP system, and then Royal Gorge Sinking Fund, and then a portion of our ARPA funds will be used for that ERP implementation. Personnel services for general government include the hiring of an additional IT technician, and the conversion of the HR coordinator, which is part-time, to a full-time HR generalist. So those are the key changes in general government. In public safety, our personnel services include hiring an additional code enforcement officer, converting a part-time evidence technician to full-time, and then also adding a records technician, which will be an intern. That will have, it is a paid position, non-benefits eligible, but the funding from that is actually coming from DHS. They will be on our payroll, and we will get reimbursed for that intern position. All new and vacant positions, whether it is in police department or water, are all funded at family benefits for the entire year. And so just keep that in mind as well, that we do have some extra, extra burden showing there. Oops, I went too far. For public works, it's anticipated that our tandem dump truck and backhoe will be purchased using a three-year lease purchase. So you will see in our streets department, capital that totals the amount for the tandem truck, dump truck, plus the backhoe. And then you will also see debt service. We also have the debt service, we also have proceeds from debt showing. We are planning on using the $100,000 that we had budgeted in 2022 to purchase, or for the debt service, to actually reduce the debt service next year. So instead of financing the full amount, we're going to finance approximately 100,000 less. So we just want to make sure that, you know, council, council's aware of what we're, what we're looking at on that. Culture and recreation includes our museum and library, and also any of the general fund projects that might be, that are, that are funded for parks. You will see that there is 175,000 in capital outlay. What that is, is for the inspections and possible repairs of pedestrian bridges throughout the community and in the park system. So that's, that's what that is identified as. If you want, if you need more information on any of the slides, just stop me. Park Improvement Fund, on their revenue, we are showing 2.4 million versus 1.7. The biggest increase in that is from the Royal Gorge Bridge lease revenue. We are putting a substantial portion of the anticipated lease revenue to the Parks Department, for the Parks Fund in 2023. We are required to set aside minimum of 20% to go into parks, and we've exceeded, we've exceeded that.
Tammy, could you say what the 125,000 is the grants contributions?
On that, we will be applying for a grant of 110,000 for irrigation controllers. If we do not, if we do not get a grant, the grant, of course, we will not be doing that. The other is actually going to be a transfer from the water fund into the Parks Fund to help the purchase those irrigation controllers as well, because we see it as a conservation, water conservation effort.
And those are smart controllers? Correct.
In the Parks Improvement Fund, the personnel services include converting four seasonal parks workers to three full-time employees. Two will be parks maintenance workers, and the third will be a junior arborist. The transfer out is the funding that we had identified in 2022 to go towards the building of the maintenance building, and that is going to be transferred into the Quality of Life Fund, because we are going to be trying to get some grants to help cover that cost. We also, in our personnel services, have changing a parks equipment operator to a lead position. So the difference in that is also included in, in the personnel. That will be an internal posting only. And so we're anticipating that it will, it would just be a promotion up. So we'll convert one. Conservation Trust, our revenue, we're anticipating it to be about $10,000 more, and that's primarily in our lottery proceeds. Though that funding is restricted on how we can use it. It has to go towards our, our parks or the maintenance of parks, whether it's equipment or natural maintenance. We also do have $10,000 in our Conservation Trust that we receive from Fremont County. That is typically used to purchase the library books. And so you'll see that under the supplies. The capital equipment that we will be purchasing does include a pickup, commercial turf mower, stump grinders, fencing at Veterans Park, an aerator, and top seeder machine. Some of these items were budgeted in 2022, but they're not able to come in, or pricing came in too high that we weren't able, able to do them. So that is being carried, carried forward.
And that fencing on for Veterans Park is along the railroad right-of-way, isn't that correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
Yeah, that was, I think, how we had identified as what, tree row fencing?
Correct.
So it's kind of a life and safety fencing from pedestrians walking through Veterans Park across the railroad. I would like to maybe put in a consideration for the Depot Park fencing as well. Between Veterans Park and Depot Park, both of those are unique in that they have direct interfaces with commercial businesses. And, and they're frustration with those commercial businesses that are private property owners that are having to deal with public problems, meaning public problems in our parks, particularly with homelessness. And fencing is one of those ways that we might be able to help to address that, since they are our direct border neighbors.
We can look and see how we can adjust the budget when, before it comes to first reading for that?
That would be awesome. Yeah, so if we're going to do it, then let's just, let's just take care of both.
For the Quality of Life Fund, the primary, primary revenue is from grants, and then also, we do put a portion of the Royal Gorge lease, lease proceeds. And then our lease proceeds are typically used to help provide our match for any, any grants that, that we have. The items that are going to be funded out of Quality of Life include our community broadband, the Rudd House renovation, and that is also grant, basically everything in Quality of Life is grant-funded. So whether it's through the State Historic Preservation Society, or CDOT, or, you know, any other, you know, state or federal grants, that's where all the funding for, the majority of the funding is coming from here, plus then our, our matches. We do have the US, US 50 pedestrian improvements, US 50 East lighting, the safe routes to school, which is the sidewalk, relocating the Parks Maintenance Building, revitalizing, revitalizing, revitalizing Main Street, I cannot say that word, clock tower planning. And then we also have, there's two, you see Main Street on there twice. It's two different items that are on there. And then the Four Mile Lane Bridge. Some of these grants and projects take multiple years, so you will see them for year after year. And some of it, we cannot proceed until we, we cannot proceed until CDOT, or what it, or the Grant Funding Agency actually signs off. So we just want, you know, you will see some of those carried over.
I only see revitalizing Main Street once. What are the two different projects?
So we have the revitalizing Main Street, which that one is for the bike racks and benches.
Creative crosswalks.
Creative crosswalks. The other Main Street improvements are, that's going to be the bumpouts and such from what, third on up?
Yeah, that's the million-dollar CDOT grant.
I haven't seen anywhere mention of the downtown parking with the dry cleaners. I was wondering if that was intentional, or if that's something that needs to be added?
So I, I think maybe some clarification, or maybe even direction from council. When we acquire properties, we typically use the property acquisition fund for those improvements or destruction of properties. That's what we did with Constantino's when we demoed that building. It came out of that fund. There's $400,000 set aside in the property acquisition fund for those potential demos of both Skyline Steel and the new method laundry, assuming we take possession of it when, when we do.
Or what about the Brownfield Grant? Because I thought some of the expenses are coming from that.
Some of the expenses come from that. We can't use the Brownfield Grant to take down the building. So any remediation, that's coming out of the Brownfield Grant, but we can't use it to demo a building.
Okay. So remediation as in- So remediation as in maybe creating the parking lot itself?
I think that could be a potential as part of the solution for capping a site. That may be a potential use of those funds.
So you need direction from council?
Well, you know, that was the plan as far as the demo of the buildings was using the Property Acquisition Fund. So as long as council understands that that's what those funds are, we're planning and using those funds for, I think that's what we're looking for.
Council, do you have any input on that? Thumbs up? Okay, it's dangerous. It needs to come down.
Yep.
I have another question there. On the Canyon City Multimodal Master Plan, what is our intentions there? We've got 130,000 set aside for that.
Yeah, that, again, is a CDOT grant to create an actual multimodal master plan. So that was something that was identified in the comprehensive plan. It's taking the next step. So looking at complete streets, trail connections, you know, where bikes fit into, you know, the city streets, those types of things.
And that 130,000 will come from CDOT then? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So this page would be a good example, even if there's an asterisk that said "grant money", or whatever, because a majority of these are grant monies.
Yeah, and Quality of Life, almost all the projects are grant-funded.
But it's helpful to differentiate that? That, I mean, and that there's credit given for obtaining the grants for these as well? Anything else before we move on?
So our 2A Street Improvement Fund is our dedicated sales tax to do our street improvements. The two items that you will see budgeted include $6 million for capital outlay, which is going to be rotary construction repairs, and then our debt service. We did increase the amount that we are anticipating spending. In the past, we had only budgeted what we were anticipating as current-year revenue. We have budgeted more than what we're anticipating the revenue, because we have built up some reserves in that fund, and we want to be trying to spend those on the projects.
A quick question.
Go ahead, please.
On that same slide, is the debt service, is that related to the borrowing from other city funds when 2A first, so that's paying back?
Yes, that is.
So basically, we're paying back Rex Brady Cemetery Fund. Oh, and the Water Fund?
And the Water Fund, and General Fund.
Thank you for our tweets.
Are we anticipating any further fund transfers from other departments into the 2A Improvement Fund this year?
Typically, we do not put any transfers into that fund, because it has very specific guidelines on what we can spend the money on. And so we have a separate review of that by an outside firm. We have an auditing firm come in and review those items. And so if we have, so for instance, we do have $1 million in 2A that will be used as our match for the Main Street improvements. We're keeping that separate. We're not doing a transfer out of those funds. We will be splitting the cost of that project between the two funds, just to make sure that we can clearly identify where those 2A funds went.
And so perhaps I didn't ask my question. When we first started the 2A project, we transferred money out of other funds. That's where the debt service comes from. And so my question is, are we planning on further transfers out of other funds into the 2A project?
No.
No, that was an initial capital fund of the projects, to get the ball rolling before any tax revenues came in, and we've been repaying it ever since. So there are no additional funds coming from other city funds into the 2A fund. It's all about trying to clear that up before the 2A...
Potentially expires.
Sunsets, yes.
Yep, thank you.
Water Fund revenue is anticipating, is anticipated at 10.6 million. You will see that there is 4 million in intergovernmental. That is a potential grant. So, again, if that, if we are not successful in getting a grant, that project will not move forward.
And that particular grant is the lead and copper service line grant for replacement of service lines?
So I noticed in the 2023 goals, it didn't have the lead program. Is that because it's contingent on?
It's contingent upon the grant funding, correct.
Water is anticipating having a budget of 14 million in expenditures, 14.7. That is approximately 6 million from 2022. 4 million of that being the lead copper service line replacement. And then we also are having some of our projects carry forward again, because we have ordered the items, whether it was in '22 or in '21. We have not received them, and they are moving forward. The other item that we have is our SCADA, the PCL SCADA upgrade, and that will be funded using ARPA funds. And then if we do have any excess ARPA funding, that we were going to be using that towards the filter media. So those were two items that were identified to be funded by ARPA in the Water Fund.
And looking at page 169 on the budget, we show water projects of the 6.985 million. Is that, that's the... The question I want to ask is, underwater projects, there's nothing listed for contribution or grants. Wouldn't that 4 million, potential 4 million from the lead copper grant show up there?
We have that in the capital outlay on that as a capital item. But yes, I see where you're saying that in some areas that we have it identified under a grant. In some funds, it's identified under a grant and contribution versus the capital item.
Okay, thank you.
Stormwater, we're anticipating $2.3 million in revenue. 200,000 of that is anticipated to come from our ARPA funding to help with the...
Rhodes Avenue project?
Rhodes Avenue, thank you. To help cover that gap in the costs. We also do have a, I'd want to say 8.92% increase proposed on the rates on that, and we will be going over some of the rate increases later on this evening.
Before we move on from stormwater, the, in the past, we've, at least I have talked about the difference between spending to comply with our NPDES permit and spending to deal with the stormwater problem. And we're not yet making those differentiations in our budget, is that right?
I did not bring my email down from Glenda where we have it identified.
We have it broken out, but it's not in the budget.
We are using, what is...
So...
What's the program we use to track the costs?
Cartograph.
Cartograph.
Thank you. We do, we are able to generate from Cartograph what our costs are on the stormwater program. Glenda does provide quarterly reports that show what some of those expenses are related to the program.
So as an elected city official, that number has some importance to me, to be able to speak to other people about unfunded mandates, and even perhaps with county commissioners, about the size of the problems that we're facing with stormwater. So whether it's a addendum page or something, I really want to see those numbers. And this is now, what, the third year I've requested, and I'm not seeing those numbers. And I'm not very happy about that. I want to see those numbers.
I'm gonna back you up on that. May I pretend that you have been avidly and explicitly asking for that for a long time now? And I think that you very kindly, have a very kind tone for your frustration that you have over this issue.
So whether it's a true budgetary number or not, I would like to see that broken out, please.
Yeah, and I don't know that it'll show up in the budget, but we'll get you that break.
Okay.
And just so I'm understanding correctly, you're looking for, what is the cost being driven every year by those requirements? Am I saying that right?
So essentially, in the past, when I first came on council, we talked about stormwater as one amorphous glob that we spent a lot of money on, okay? The issue is, is that we have an NPDES driven by the Clean Water Act issued by the state permit that requires us to perform certain actions, including permitting for stormwater purposes, construction sites throughout our city, and other permitting activities, including reporting with the permit, administrative costs with complying with the permit. In addition, we have the stormwater quantity problem, which is because it rains, and because the rain eventually makes it so way down, flows to the river, there are stormwater projects that we have to undertake to deal with that quantity issue. And so the division between those two, to me, is very important to know what... One is an unfunded mandate driven by the state. The state says, "Thou shalt provide a permitting structure for stormwater", which is all right, but it is an unfunded mandate. And the other is a condition that we have in the city that is not driven necessarily by a permit that requires potentially a lot of spending, 70 million bucks, we have estimates for. So that's why I keep asking for the division.
And so on the water quantity side of issues, or whatever, I would assume then that's kind of the area where the conversations with the county might occur in terms of, you know, this idea that areas of Fremont County outside of the city, because of the way they're handling or not handling water, impact those costs for us?
They might, yes.
Am I on the right track there?
They might, yes.
Well, and they also can impact our MSF permit, too, for clean water, because they also have water that flows down through their county neighborhood, urban neighborhoods that go into our urban neighborhoods and into the river. It also becomes very important when we have discussions about proposed increases to the stormwater fee, that is really important in those conversations to talk about the cost of these unfunded mandates by the EPA that we have to provide funding for, or else there's a lot of risk to the city. And so that was a really big deal when we first passed a stormwater increase. After, I don't think there had been an increase since that Enterprise Fund was created. Oh, I tell you what, that was nasty business. And so some lessons learned, it's really important to know those things moving forward.
Is there, I don't recall now, seems like we used to have with the county, and I can't remember what it's called, but some kind of mutual discussion regarding land outside the city within a mile, or three miles, or whatever that amount is.
Urban growth boundary.
Thank you. Is that, is this an issue that would fall into discussions for that? Or, he's smiling. Is that a happy smile? Just say whatever you can say about that.
You know, within the urban growth boundary, we try to encourage the county to follow our standards. And part of that is an IGA that we need to get done. And with the lack of a county planner and county engineer, we haven't been able to have some of those conversations from our staff to staff. But that is one of the things that is certainly on our list of things to do and accomplish.
Thanks.
There's probably a lot more we need to say about that, but that's for another day. Are we ready to move on? Okay, thank you.
You will see on the stormwater expenses that the capital outlay has decreased. And that is primarily because we are spending down the COPs. And so we had 3.3 million budgeted in '22, and we will have, right now, 1.5 million budgeted for 2023. So we do, so the COPs are our certificates of participation that we issued back in 2019. Our self-insurance fund is where we account for all the expenses that relate to the employee's, the city managed health insurance plan for our employees. We're anticipating the revenue to be $2.7 million, and that is a combination of employee premiums and city premiums. We're anticipating the expenses to be approximately 2.4 million. We're estimating the reserves to be at 1.6 million. We implemented changes back in 2020 to have premium increases every year, even when our reserves are above the target that the self-insurance plans ask for. Typically, they want you to have between 600 and 900,000, depending on how your plan is ran. We know that with the city taking on the first 100,000 of claims per participant, that we need to have those reserves higher, because if we have bad years, that can impact it. And we want to make sure that we can actually have a sustainable plan.
So how much is in reserves currently, and what's your goal?
We're anticipating 1.6 million at the end of '23. And so that's approximately, what, a million above where we should be, because we should have between 600 and 900,000. So we want to continue to maintain that. And we do have an increase in premiums built in as well.
It's a 3% increase. We have, I'll say we've been lucky over the last couple of years of actually building the fund. You know, a couple of years prior to that, we were seeing a lot of medical inflation. And one of the things, the policy that the Insurance Committee has enacted over those few years is to try and maintain a small increase every year, rather than having to try and play catch-up and have a huge increase at some point. So we do expect that, you know, that medical inflation number will probably continue to uptick as well.
And that had been running, historically, it was running about 5%. So even our 3% increase isn't at the medical inflation rate. But yes, continuing to have slight increases and claims being down for, you know, 2023, 2022 going into 2023, we're hoping to actually continue to build that reserve up, yes.
On that slide, that's just, that's 3% rate increases, that line?
Yes, yep. I obviously missed my percent sign there.
I just wanted to be sure I was understanding.
Especially lucky it's only 3%.
We're gonna do three rate increases, just kidding.
Yeah, no.
So the items that we have for consideration are our water rate increase. We are going, we are proposing to have a 9% rate increase for water. The monthly bill for 10,000 gallons would be $45.34. That increase would be $3.74. And then for the year, it would be... And then for the year, it would be approximately $44.93, and that's for residential inside We show the same increase for the non-residential inside city limits, and that increase would be approximately $45.42 for the year. And that's based on 10,000 gallons. On stormwater, we are proposing an 8.2% increase, which is essentially a inflationary increase. So that equates to $1.41 per month, or $16.91 per year for residential, and approximately $87.10 a year for commercial. We will have changes that will be made to the budget as presented tonight. We will be moving projects that started in 2022 that will not be completed or that have been delayed. We also, one of them is our Grandview Avenue Bridge water line. We are anticipating having that start this year. That was not listed as an item in the '23 budget. It will be, it will be carried forward to 2023. Also, equipment that was ordered in 2022 and that has not been received will be carried forward. One of those items is the backhoe for the cemetery. We ordered that, we were told that we should have it in November. We found out that it's going into production in November. So those funds will be reallocated in, in '23. So you will see those, that change, those, some of those changes. Would you like to, me to go over the items that I have in the appendix? So our staffing changes include our HR generalist, which would be a full-time position. We would absorb the, basically the part-time HR coordinator position would go away and it would become a full-time generalist. The IT technician is an addition, and that of course is budgeted as full-time. The CSO is in the PD. The evidence technician was again in PD, which was convert from part-time to full-time. The intern for the records technician, two parks maintenance workers, full-time, a junior arborist, full-time. Those positions are partially funded by eliminating four seasonal positions. And then also, we would have a parks maintenance lead, which we would convert one parks equipment operator to a lead position.
I thought I saw in the book that there was, under planning, had talked about getting a planning technician. It was part-time though, is that why it's not included in here? But it is an additional. It says creation of a part-time planning technician position to manage zoning inquiries, process fence permits, and zoning verification.
That is not budgeted?
So the, that's on page 77. And then HR also looked in here, talked about going from a part-time to a full-time position. Was that not budgeted either?
We, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So on HR, we are looking to, right now, it is 1.5, so basically one full-time as the director and a part-time HR coordinator. The part-time HR coordinator essentially would go away and it would become a full-time HR generalist. So it would be two full-time positions in HR.
So I think that needs to be noted unauthorized. Well, it says the human resource generalist, but it needs to have an asterisk that it's changing to FTE.
Yes, so after we, after I printed the budget, I realized that I did not put a little notation on every position that was changed. And so when you look back at pages 209 through 211, where there are changes that were not identified with the asterisk.
The IT technician might be one of those?
Yes, IT technician and the human resource generalist, that's on page 209. So those two need identified with the asterisk, and I have that as a change to be made in our final document. Then on page two, I think those were the only two that we had, nope, yeah, those were the only two that we had missed identifying as a change on.
Okay, we might need to make some adjustments on planning on page 77 then.
Yeah, I've marked that, that'll be removed from the budget.
For, from our budgeted FTEs for this year, 2022, how many, how many FTEs do we have right, budgeted for this year?
Just the new ones or all of them?
Uh, everything.
What do we have right now?
So, so the, let me, let me state that a little bit different way. It would be really helpful to have in the budget, a little chart that shows the, the FTEs by year, so that, so that council has an idea of what is, is happening. It, it's fine, I mean, we've had the discussions one by one as we do it, that's, that's not a problem. I'm, you know, support what we're doing, but it would be awfully nice to see that in a, in a.
Sure, yeah. And, you know, this, this chart was something that wasn't in the budget a couple of years ago. We've added it at the request of council, and we were happy to make alterations as we go.
Well, even with the new proposed positions that are going to full-time, I would like to know, is there somewhere where we have what that annual cost will be for that increase in salaries for these new positions or expanded?
I do have that, I do not have that with me this evening. That is one of the items that when we had the retreat and we kind of gave an overview of what was going to be, what the budget requests were, those, some of those were identified at, I think they were identified at that point as well. It's just not included in this presentation as a separate, separate item. And then if, on historical for the FTEs, that is shown at the back of our audit. So if you, so you can look in the statistical section, so it's something that we do have available, we just don't have it as part of.
Is that in this report?
Yes, so if you go back to the statistical section, it does list the full-time equivalents, and it would show back for, for 10, for 10 years.
Thank you.
But it does not show between this year and, you know, '22 is not going to be in there, of course, because that's only through '21.
In the audit, not the budget.
Right, in the audit. Overall, in the personnel, we do have budgeted 6.5% cost of living adjustments. That pretty much will be the way we can do our, we will not necessarily move people further into the range for the compensation study. But what we will do is we will continue to adjust our scales so we are in line with what we were, what we were saying we were going to do. That was one of the items that we said, is that we would continually, we'd review annually what our pay structure was and make adjustments based on whether it was the cost of living or as a portion of what we were doing is an increase or just as, as the full amount. So we will be adjusting, adjusting the pay scale. We do, we are not anticipating having a merit increase in, in 2023. When we did our phases for the compensation classification study, we're anticipating that 2024 would be the first year we would be able to do something with merit. We do have the 3% health insurance increase, that's citywide. On the police retirement, the pension, which is mandatory, there's a half percent increase in the employer contribution, and that is going to continue until 2030. The deci, the death and disability increase is 0.2%. And it's actually a 0.2% increase, and that will go on the employee side only. We are not, right, it used to be that the city funded 100% of the death and disability, but as the increases continue to rise on what we have to do mand, you know, for our mandatory contributions, we are now putting some of that burden on, at least the death and disability burden, onto the employee side. And then we're also offsetting some of the increase in the pension by reducing the 457 contribution that the city does for PD.
What, what does 457 stand for?
It is a, it's a type of retirement plan that the, the FPPA offers. We do have that available for gov, you know, the non-sworn employees as well, but there is no city match on that. It was only in PD that there was a city match. And so by us reducing the 457 match by half percent a year, we're still contributing essentially the same amount to their retirement, but it's going in the pension side, not the 457 side. It's a deferred compensation is the 457. The capital equipment, I think we've talked quite a bit about what capital is in, in the budget. I do have it identified separately between capital equipment and capital projects. We do have items that were not funded. We did have requested the generator for City Hall, and we are not, we are not looking to fund that in '23. We are going to continue to see if we can get grants or if there's help from other agencies that we can possibly get some funding on that. We did not fund the PD staff vehicles or the expansion of their impound lot. We do not have the Macon Plaza intersection improvements in there. And then we also did not fund 100% of the MDTs for 2023. How it is proposed is that it is a three-year plan to replace the MDTs, and then we'll get into a cycle to replace those. The next two slides show what our health insurance premiums are, how much the city contributes, and how much the employee contributes. We do have two different plans. The main difference is that Plan A, the employee pays more in premium and they have richer benefit. Plan B, they pay less in premium and have less benefit. You know, their out-of-pockets are higher, deductibles are higher.
I just saw that Councilmember Schmisher has her hand raised. Schmisher, please just speak up. This is a free-for-all meeting, and I'm sorry I missed your hand being raised.
Oh, no worries. I, it's, it's always a little hard when you're on Zoom. Administrator Stevens and Director Nordak spent quite a bit of time with me last week answering a lot of questions, but I did have three quick ones that have come up during the meeting. One, I just wanted to flag on the city water in proposed increase of 9%. When we had these conversations last December, I had requested that we take a look again at the recommendations that had been made from the study that was done as to how to ensure that we're, we're meeting our financial goals in terms of planning. And one of those recommendations had been ensuring that the golf course special rate and some of the other special rate groups were brought back in line with the, the city general residential rates. So if we could take another look at that and ensure that, that what, when that comes forward to us, it does kind of take into account some of those other recommendations, that would be very much appreciated.
And we, we have looked at that, and we, when we bring the ordinance forward, we can bring more information about that as well.
Great. And then I was just curious with regard to the police compen, deferred compensation plan, if there were any concerns with regard to recruitment and retention with making that shift. It certainly sounds like it's a prudent shift, given the information that Director Nordak has shared, but I also know that we are very close to, to being fully staffed on the CCPD, and just wanted to make sure that, that we didn't anticipate any issues or concerns with that kind of change.
So this mandated change actually took place a few years ago, and over the last, I don't know if it was last budget cycle or the last two budget cycles, we've already started doing this implementation, so it, it has not affected us at, at that point. Essentially, the, the benefit is staying the same, it's just a matter of the blend of where that, where those funds are going.
Understood. And then my last comment or question is, I believe the Macon Plaza improvements were originally budgeted for this year, or the Macon Plaza intersection improvements, and that it had been deferred. I think I understood from the last slide or two that, that that was no longer, it was not going to be deferred, it just was not going to occur. Is my understanding correct in that regard?
We, what we've done is we've moved it further out on the five-year CIP, so it's still something we would like to do, but the focus has been moved towards Clock Tower Plaza, given all the grant funds that are focused, focused in that particular area.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
I've got about five questions, should I run through those?
Are we ready to go run through questions, or do you have any more slides for us to see first, Tammy?
Nope, the only other one was the rates for Plan B. So that was it.
Okay. Yes, please, Emily, get us started.
Okay, and I think mostly these are not complex. On page 26, where it's talking about the telephone occupation tax and how it's kind of disappearing, so to speak, is that something that we should just by ordinance get rid of that tax? I mean, we're not getting much in the way of revenue from it, and maybe that would be a benefit to the people that we maybe think who are left who have landlines, you know, the poor, older people or whatever. I, it's just a thought. We don't have to decide that now, of course.
Which fund are you talking about?
Page 26, the general fund dash telephone occupation tax.
I think we, Tammy, I don't know what your reaction is, but I think we probably need to do some more homework on that before we would, what, what the costs are associated with that.
Part of, part of the issue there too is that we knew, we know, I believe we know, contrary to Black Hills, the, the telephone occupation tax may not be a direct line item charge on a individual's bill. It may be some other mechanism the phone company uses to recover that. But, but I, I agree with the mayor, is we may need to do a little more homework on that one.
Right. And on the next page, 27, I, in regard to the gas company franchise fee, I believe my understanding is that that's a 3% franchise fee, but I can't figure out why, on my own gas bill, it's nowhere near 3%. I'm paying 2 cents a month for a franchise fee. The city sales tax, you know, you can see by that amount on your bill that it's 62 cents on my, one of my recent bills. So why, if they're both 3%, why is one 62 cents and one's 2 cents? Do we know?
That's a good question, and, you know, it may be time to do an audit of.
Right. Well, and you know. Well, and you know, speaking of audit, just I'll mention, because it's in my head, but before Black Hills, you know, obviously, we don't have a franchise fee there now, but before they rearranged their bill, I truly believe that some of my Black Hills electric bills in years past, that they were, the way they were, they were taking percentages of the total above a certain item, they'd take a percentage of that total. Then you move to the next item, and that was a percent of everything above that. And so I forget whether it was the sales tax or the franchise fee, it was literally taxing a tax. In other words, you had a sales tax, and they were including that in how they computed the franchise fee, or vice versa. So auditing all of these kinds of things might be something worth doing at some point. But that one, I just couldn't figure out. It's like 62 cents for a 3% sales tax, and only 2 cents were on allegedly 3% franchise fee. So check your gas bills, see what you think. My next question is in regard to, it's part of the municipal judge's, the court overview. So on pages 51 and 52, there was, you know, quite a bit of discussion there about the pretty strong increase in shoplifting, particularly at Walmart, and how these cases, you know, come into municipal court and drive a lot of different kinds of work. And maybe this isn't a question to be answered here right now, but I just wondered if we could do anything different so that more of those cases would go to county court. I don't know. I mean, it's just a question I had.
I had a big question mark about that, too. It sounded like there was a big burden on them, and what do we need to do to help with that?
Right.
And I had a further question of, if I could, elaborating along those same lines. The one bullet on the, towards the bottom third of page 51 says, "There is much work to be done in developing a system with the police department to process bench warrants for failing to appear." Fremont County Sheriff announced that he and his staff have not processed municipal warrants. There was, that was significant deviation prior practices, and will create a substantial burden on the city police department. And so the, I just want to make sure that we've got open lines of communication there, and that we're, that council is kept apprised of that problem. You know, the sheriff may have some reason for not doing that. For instance, I don't know if this is true or not, or just speculation on my part, but that we may have a DA that will not prosecute those warrants, and so the sheriff has thrown in the towel on that or something. I don't know, and that, but, but that's, the request is for more information, better communication here, because if there are, if there are problems here in this department, council, I'm sure, would love to be part of the solution.
Agree.
Thank you.
My next question, let's see. This is another one that maybe we can't deal with too much right now, but on 106, talking about street division goals and so forth, I just have a broad question about, can we think about, or should we think about, putting more general fund dollars into street improvements? And the reason I say that is probably obvious to all of us, and that is, we have street problems, even with the 2A funding. You know, there's a lot of really rough streets, and I just don't know how to, to me, that's just one of those basic services that we look to first in municipalities, since it's the basic street, water, you know, whatever those basic services are. So it concerns me. I know there's funding in here somewhere about College, just as an example, College Avenue from, I think, Fourth or Fifth to Ninth, but from Ninth to Fifteenth is really awful. And I know we can't move faster with what we have, but I just have a general desire to see how we can put more money, if there's a way to put more general fund money. So I just wanted to express that more than anything else, unless there's an answer.
So the, on that, on that issue, I think that my understanding, and perhaps Mayor Smith can help me out here, my understanding is that, that kind of the theory of the 2A, the whole 2A process, was that, number one, streets, street repair had been neglected to such a point that there was no way for the city to be able to fund the needed repairs and get the streets up to a, to a level that normal maintenance could then address as we go forward. And so the, part of the problem that we've got is we're, we're still in that, in that zone, if you want to call it, where normal maintenance expenditures will not really touch the problem. And I understand the ask, is there, is there a way that we can look at spending a little more money, throwing a little more money at streets to help accelerate that process? That, that it's, it is a complex problem, because we do know the problem with the utilities under the streets that affect other departments. And I understand the question, but, but the theory behind the 2A vote and proposals and what we've been doing was that, was that the streets were so far down that there was no way that we could get them up to a place. And we're, and we've really not done that many lane miles. We have, what is it, like 66 lane miles of streets that were poor or failing before we started the project, and we've made a dent, but it is truly just a dent.
And I guess part of my question related to all of that is that we know, especially on the north side of town, we have lousy soils, the expansive soils, which I am no expert, I'm no street builder, but I would guess that that has a huge impact on trying to just maintain. Aside from reconstructing, that's one thing, but just the maintenance itself, and I wonder if.
Well, we do, maintenance, we do take out of the general budget.
Right, right. So I just wonder if we need more there for that. I'm not talking about the 2A reconstruction.
It seems like before Kim left, she had said that the streets that are worth maintaining, we are on top of it. So, I mean, it's kind of like, we, to chip and seal a street that's falling apart is like putting a fresh coat of paint on some, a side of a house that is.
Over your rush.
That's rotting.
Yeah.
And it's just a waste, and it doesn't do anything. And so we're up to date, and we're really doing well with our chip seal on the streets that, the few streets that are actually in decent condition and worth having that. Looks like we've filled 2,000 potholes in 2022, about, or over that, and I just don't know. I think it would be more of, are we willing to cut 2 to 4 million dollars out of the general budget to work on street reconstruction? Because that's where we're at, as having to do street reconstruction.
I understand, and I guess I'm just saying that it really needs to be a priority for any municipality, I think. And then my other question, well, I would just kind of leave that question on the table about, well, what's happening with, you know, where does Ninth to Fifteenth on College fit into our long-range plans?
Yeah, I actually, I had that in my notes, too.
Yeah. And then my other question is, is there, is there good research out there on, maybe there's better ways to do the maintenance and patching and so forth with the kind of soils we have? I just wonder. I'm picturing a rubber road. What do you think? I don't know.
Yeah, with the expansive soils, they, you know, they do have to do quite a few things to make those streets workable, and even during the reconstruction. So we are looking at all of those different things.
One of those things we looked at was full-depth reclamation, if I remember correctly, which is different than normal street reconstruction, but essentially using materials incorporated into the soils and taking away some of those expansive properties.
In places where we can do FDR, we're looking to do an FDR, and, you know, hopefully with a new Public Works Director and City Engineer, they may bring some of their own ideas.
Yes, I am looking forward to that, and I just, I hope we continue this conversation, because I do think when we're doing economic development activities and trying to bring in businesses and build more residences and all of that, we can't lose sight of some of these basic services that, we don't expect perfect streets, I don't think anyone does, but they're pretty important, especially when your, your car's getting really rattly because it's hitting bumps, and so I would just hope that we don't lose sight of that.
I think an important part of that conversation would be, too, when we go back to the voters to renew that 1% tax. We had it for a 10-year sunset, maybe seeking for a little bit longer sunset. I think we'll have to have a sunset for it to pass, but if we had a little bit longer sunset, we might be able to do some bonding or continue, or other creative ways to kick, to get some of those streets fixed sooner, rather than just doing 4 million dollars a year. We just need a little bit longer timeframe to be able to make that happen. So that could be an important part of that discussion, too, because absolutely, I agree with you. We, we still have a long ways to go to get these streets somewhat adequate. And Ninth to Fifteenth on College really, really needs more attention.
That's all I have. Thanks.
I do, I do have an additional question. We did cover one of, one of my questions, but on page 100 of the budget, the, we've, this is the co-responder, and we're, that, the, the grant is ending in June, as I understand. Is that correct? The, the grant that we had for the co-responder?
Yeah, I believe we've got a grant that ends. We are going to be seeking for extensions, and we are looking at retooling the program as well, where we have co-responder, a co-responder manager and two navigators coming from Solvissa, not sworn officers, that will be officed out of the police department.
Okay, and the, so on page 101, we actually have the budget detail there, and it shows that under personal services, that our, that our salaries and wages are going to zero in 2023, and we're pushing that money down into contracted services, and that's, that's that shift that you're talking about.
That's the shift, yes, sir.
Okay, so this is not a change to the, essentially to the, the ability of the co-responder program to respond, we'll just have different personnel, and it's not, it's still funded by the city, but, but in different depart, a different way, really.
Correct. At the Colorado Municipal League Annual Conference in June, you may have remembered attending a session by the city of North Glenn. This is more in line with the North Glenn model.
Yes, right.
Chief, did you have anything you wanted to add to the future of the co-responder program, and what it would look like, and funding with grants? I feel like that there was some word out on the street that there would be some more state funding coming out for co-responders. Of course, it's not, you can't plan on it until it's in our coffers, but there's that potential.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we're excited about this prospect. I think it's going to give us a little more comprehensive look at what's going on in the city in terms of mental health, in terms of homelessness, in terms of folks just in general need. Right from the beginning of the program, once we get it initiated, we'll have coverage on the front and backside of our, our schedule, which is something that we've been lacking since the program began. So we're really hopeful that we're going to, we're going to reach a lot more people that way. The structure is, is going to be very similar, but I think we're going to have a lot more opportunity to engage folks in need of help.
Okay. Any other questions on the co-responder part?
Just one more note, is that these changes allow the PD to have that seven-day week coverage and those extra hours, and that, that's one thing that's been missing from, you know, the way we were doing it previously.
That's great. And you may know, Chief, that we did approve the kinetic breaching tool. The only, the only ask I had of our administrator was that he make sure that there weren't four wheels attached to it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's, that's really, it's going to offer a new level of resilience for us. We're working hard to establish breaching teams on each shift and each unit across the PD, so each team will have manual breaching tools, and we will have the kinetic breaching tool. So I, I don't see us standing around too many doors.
Great, thank you.
Chief, I do have an additional question under 2023 major goals for the Community Service Officer Unit. It says one of their goals is to manage and respond to C Click Fix complaints more effectively. And I was wondering what that plan was to do.
Well, hopefully, when we get to full staff, we'll see a little more turnaround, a little quicker turnaround on those complaints. Right now, particularly being one down and not having the new position, that time spans out. You know, sometimes the complaints aren't getting initial notice of receipt within 24 hours, which we want to see happen daily. So folks are, they know that we're, we're aware of their complaint, we're following up on their complaint, and then we'd like to see some turnaround within the week. So hopefully, when we get those staffing numbers up, that's what we'll see. Additionally, on the CSO, in terms of effectiveness, once, once we get full staff, hopefully, we can expand our perspective and not be just reactive, be a little more proactive. So we'll, we'll be up to speed on our C Click Fix issues, and then be able to look down the road and do a little more planning and response to some of these properties that are, that are grossly ignored and pose a hazard to the community.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Chief while he's up here?
Okay, thank you.
How do you think we're doing as far as the resources for the CCPD and dealing with homelessness? I know, it sounds like there's going to be, we've had a lot of cleanups, we've had a lot of interactions, we've really stepped it up.
We have.
Are we sufficient for 2023 to help support?
Yes, ma'am, and I, and we're getting ready to build on that. Spoke with Mr. Stevens and Rex with Parks, and we're looking to initiate a protocol to collect up some of this property that gets left behind, because right now, we're, we're pushing them, I'll be quite honest. You know, when we find them in violation of law, we summons them, we caution them, summons them, and oftentimes, that property gets left behind. So trying desperately not to criminalize homelessness, we're coming up with a protocol to collect that, that left-behind gear and hold it for a 30-day period so that we can give them notice, give them an opportunity to come and collect it, that sort of thing. So we're doing well on the, on the Riverwalk. Those encampments have, have cut back significantly, and I walk it at least twice a week, and I'm pleased with what I'm seeing. Our bike patrols are out there. Our park officer hasn't been out there as, as much here recently. We've had to get some repairs done to the UTV, and we're giving it a little facelift, painting it and putting some lights on it, and we're ordering doors and ordering gear for the bike officers so that as winter, fall and winter comes in, we're not going to, we're not going to, we're not going to leave it unpatrolled. So we're gearing up for the colder times. So I think we're on the right path. You know, I wish we had a few more services for folks, but we are making sure we offer those services every time we engage them, and unfortunately, in those times where we have to enforce the law, we make sure we offer those services before that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, gosh, I have lots, loads. I might want to start with, under capital improvements, I had mentioned how the dry cleaner in the parking lot hadn't been mentioned, but also Skyline still had.
Page, page?
Well, both pages, seven and 215, I didn't see Skyline still mentioned, nor under economic development. I don't know if that was on there or not, but under economic development, also maybe want to, on 2023 major goals, include working with Black Hills for the Clark Station. I mean, you need to get credit for that work that you're doing, and we should include that on there, since you're in that, in that process already. And you had mentioned, Rick, about, this is page 82, focusing on visual and musical arts and entertainment, and there has been a lot of talk about developing an art council again, and wondered if that would be a part of that 2023 goal, and if there's budgeting money to help with that. You know, the 150th had created, has created some public art. There was definitely some desire for that, and would love to see that continue. There's also some potential relationships with the Department of Corrections with some incredible artists that are incarcerated, but man, they have some skills that they could share with their community.
Yeah, on the, on the arts side, we're having, we're starting to have some conversations and trying to coordinate how we work it out between us and Florence and creating an Arts Start program. There's, there's a couple of different components to it. Florence already has their Arts Council. Florence already has their Arts Council. We're we're trying to create one here, and and will be in the coming months. And the first conversation I've had, well, not the first conversation, but the most recent conversation I had is about an Art Start program. But we have we have a lot of artists here, very similar to the Tech Start program with all these tech people that didn't know they existed in this community. There's a lot of arts people that don't know they exist in this community. It's visual arts, it's audio arts, it's video arts. One of the local members of our community wants to create a video training system, basically film training system. He was part of one in Arizona. So that's that's a that's kind of the direction we're going. And really putting it all together is going to be the the challenging part because you don't necessarily want to give up visual arts for film and in audio arts. How do you work that all together and create a program for our community to 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 really benefit economically? But where I come from, arts is a huge economic driver, huge, mostly musical arts. But I think it needs to be a key key component of our of our economy here, so.
Now, we have some growth in the musical arts, too. We have some new people in town that are really moving and shaking some things.
Yeah, yeah, we've got a good a good growing symphony. We've got songwriters, singer-songwriters, you know, it's it's really pretty impressive, the number of people we have here in this community who are very, very talented people. So that's that's going to be an initiative for next year, for sure. On Skyline Steel, quite honestly, when I created created the goals for the budget, I probably slapped it together too quickly and didn't think of all of the things that we're working on out there. But Skyline Steel property is going through asbestos, will be going through asbestos abatement soon, and that property will be used by until we take it down, will be used by the Police Department and the Parks Department for the homeless equipment storage in there. We do not have an RFP out yet for demolition, so as long as that's still available and as long as the abatement is done, which it is not yet, the building will be available for storage of the of the equipment. The plan ultimately, and not very long in the future, is to take it down and keep that process rolling. We have we have we're trying to award a contract to an abatement company. We're waiting for insurance and liability information from that company. I'm waiting to hear probably tomorrow when they will be able to begin and by when they'll be finished with the abatement. But until then, technically, we're not supposed to use the building because there is asbestos in there. So that's that's a huge, I guess I probably should have put that in the goals, but that's a huge one.
So Clark Station, the dry cleaners, and also Constantino's, let's not leave them off the goals.
Well, I I will add those to the goals. I'll add those to the goals.
Also in those are goals.
Yeah, the new method, we're we're waiting for our third monitoring well sampling results. We've got the the technical results. We're waiting for the recommendations before we can meet with our environmental attorney to determine which direction we go. We're going to have to create a plan, cleanup plan, but we don't know to what extent yet. So pretty tough to move forward until we know from CDPHE and EPA what we can actually do. So but yeah, I probably should have added more goals than I did.
Thank you for all you do. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Also, Rex, I have some questions for you as well for the parks. Some of those is also include making sure you give yourself credit that needs to be given credit for, and that's under twenty twenty-two goals that are accomplished, to include the new signs that the Parks Department made for Temple Canyon, which are gorgeous. Would be a wonderful thing to add, and moving the Christmas tree to Macon Plaza with additional Christmas lights for this December. And also all of the homeless and vandalism cleanup that you you guys do on a yearly basis.
Yeah, a lot of times you don't think of those things as special, just kind of routine, so.
Yeah, but it's I mean, but it is big. It is really big for you to do that. I do have a question about the relocation of your facility. I know we've it's in the master plan, the Centennial Park Master Plan. I'm on page one twenty-one, by the way.
Thank you.
The Centennial Master Plan talks about moving it, and we have talked about the eight hundred thousand dollar-ish budget, and now it's up to one point three million dollars. That's really, really painful, so.
It is. It's painful for me as well.
And I noticed that there's maybe some seeking for like four hundred and fifty-five thousand or something dollars to fill that gap with grant money. Are we going to pause that relocation until we find out if we can get grant money to help with that?
Yeah, well, we've got an RFP to go out to check on pricing, but assuming the pricing comes in over what we have available, which is the seven fifty, we will have to pause it until the grant funds come in.
Yeah, and I know Brandy's working on a grant as we speak, so.
And I guess my next question is how, I mean, when we did the master planning, it was like, yeah, this is on water beachfront property. We should move it because we could use this, you know, for the better of the public. I I would like to know from you, how important is it to you and the Parks Department that this gets moved? Is this something that's imminent? Is this just something that would be nice?
It's it's really something that needs to to happen. We've just outgrown that facility. Most of our well, all of our employees have to park in the new parking lot that we made for park patrons. It's just too small, way too small. And I kind of hate to move away from the river because that's kind of been our home forever.
Well, plus you're right by your flagship park where you can keep an eye on it.
Right, and you know, we plan on maybe having a maybe a little satellite building there to where we can store equipment and and things like that so we can maintain, you know, the maintenance that we've become accustomed to for that park.
Okay, so I guess maybe we'll wait to hear what kind of grant funding, the magic, Brandy can make happen. Is that where we're at?
That that is where we're at, and that's why it's it's in the budget because, you know, if we if we can get it, so we do want to do that project next year.
Sure.
Just another and go ahead, Amy, please.
Madam Mayor, I was just going to chime in on that particular topic because I do think that when you look at the the master plan for Centennial Park and Duck Park and what we're hoping to do down there, a pretty critical preliminary step is that move of the Parks Department building. I really think, you know, the park has come a long ways in recent years, but ensuring that that move is able to take place will ensure that we can kind of bring that to to its full full status of what I know we would all really like for it to be. So I just did just want to underscore and echo what Director Brady mentioned and just just note how important it is that we do find a way forward, and I have full full faith and confidence in Brandy and her capabilities on the grants front. Thanks.
Absolutely, but I mean, that's part of the bigger conversation, which Emily Tracy alluded to, is prioritizing, like, could that extra money go towards fixing more streets? I mean, or the incubator, you know, concept that we had for economic development? Or Macon Plaza still, they there's some stuff in their master plan that we haven't even looked at in probably eight years. And so we at some point, you know, when we're starting to talk about a major increase of costs, we need to make sure that we're still prioritizing it appropriately.
And just just a suggestion, Rex, kind of thinking outside the box, have you considered using Constantino's as a carpool lot, using one of the city vans to take employees to the to the facility so that you don't have to use up those parking places? That's you that's that's an off-line conversation.
Right.
Just throwing that out there.
But as far as the relocation of the the Parks Department shop, it's the final piece of the puzzle for, you know, the Centennial Park Master Plan. So that's, like I say, that's the finishing product there, and that's what we've been striving to to get done for many years. But if any council member would like to come and tour our facility, and just I can show you exactly how much room that we have in there and don't have. All of our vehicles, other than the High Ranger, have to set out in the weather, and this bigger facility is just going to be fantastic for us to we'll be able to get all that equipment in. And we actually have tires, you know, that are rotting off of equipment because we can't cover them up. And our office spaces and are just tiny, but we really do need a new facility. You know, the facility that we have out to bid right now is fairly large. We'll see where the bids come back at and just kind of move forward from there. But, you know, there might be a time that we we may have to downsize that building possibly, but we're sure hoping that the grant funding comes in and we can build the the building that we need.
Certainly, and they say construction costs are supposed to be coming down. I hope that's the case for you.
Well, I do, too, because they've done nothing but go up. When I first started talking about this building and just some of the feedback that I got from contractors, you know, we were we were looking at six, seven hundred thousand dollars. And now I'm hearing that the same building, you know, is up over a million dollars, one point three million, one point four million. So we'll just see what happens with the with the RFP, and hopefully Brandy can work her magic and get us a bunch of money, and we can actually get this building built and move our all of our equipment undercover and and move forward.
Well, thank you for the enlightenment on that. And I have another question with addition adding some more resources for the arborist. I'm wondering if that will help with a lot of the dead branches that we have on our trees everywhere because it's we have a lot of really sad-looking trees all over town.
We do, we understand that. We've had multiple storms over the last year. We've had the snowstorm, which broke everything, and then we had the giant windstorm that came through last year. So with the two-man crew, that's what we're working with now.
I know you've been super busy.
Right, and so it took actually close to three months to, you know, just to get cleaned up after that last storm. And so we dedicated most all of our manpower to cleaning up. But with the third member of the team, that that will definitely increase our ability to get out there and address what needs addressed.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you, thank you. We really appreciate all of your work. I have some questions for engineering and the lighting. I guess I have to turn that over to you for right now.
Rex, Rex, I have a comment before you leave. I just wanted to say, the last time I went out to Olda Vista, there was those wonderful chairs and tables out there. Was that in twenty twenty-two?
Those were donated by Ty Cypher with the Royal Gorge Ranch and Resort there, and they are beautiful pieces of furniture.
They're wonderful, they're and they're it's it's a wonderful thing because if you if you're old like me and you drag yourself out there, it's nice to be able to sit and watch the view. Thank you.
Sure.
One of them is about the East Canyon lighting improvements. I know we got that award a while back, and I noticed on page one forty-five, it says to complete the design of the lighting improvements. I mean, that's been underway for a super long time. Can we change that to like, complete the project? Is that realistic?
Yes, we can we can change it to complete the project. I feel more confident about that. It's in legal review with Black Hills, so we know how long that can take. But we're much closer now than we were even when this budget was put together.
Okay, good news. A similar question on page one hundred and eleven, and that's reconstruct ditch crossings at a yet-to-be-determined location. And that in the past has been the the same thing, year after year, nothing ever, ever, ever happens. Do we have a location chosen for twenty twenty-three, and are we going to do one?
Yeah, so we we've started rolling over the funds, so, you know, two hundred thousand became four hundred thousand in this budget. We do know that there is a ditch crossing on the College Avenue project, so that is one one ditch crossing that we're looking at as part of part of this project as we redo College Avenue and some of the water line and the ditch crossing there, shoring up stem walls and all those types of things.
Excellent, yeah, I would love to see that happen. On that same bullet point line, it says continue implementation of US fifty corridor plan. Is that the pedestrian corridor planners?
That that is the larger plan, so that includes the pedestrian improvements, includes the medians, but that would also include revisiting the East Access Control Plan and everything else that was identified in the the Highway Fifty corridor.
All right, so the East Access Control Plan has its own bullet point. So if this is just doing the medians on the west side and the pedestrian crossings, can we change that to implement the US fifty corridor plan or complete for the west?
So.
Because I mean, that also has been on the books for a really long time.
Yeah, but the the US fifty corridor plan is more than just that. So even once East Access Control Plan is completed, there's still the improvements that are going to have to happen over the on the East Access side.
So can you do like an additional bullet point, just just to, you know, make me happy that we are really going to like execute those pedestrians on the west side?
And we do have.
I would love to see that come to fruition.
We do have that in here. It's the fourth bullet point down under major goals, construct the US fifty pedestrian improvement project.
Yes, you're right, it's already there. Thank you very much. It just need to be better.
It's all right. There's a lot in here.
Under fleets on page one oh six, it talks about continuing weed spraying program on Highway Fifty, medians and guard rail. So that's our responsibility to keep the weeds out of the medians on Highway Fifty?
Yes, it's even though it's CDOT right of way, we're the ones that maintain it.
Okay, so I've been getting mad at CDOT because we do have some weeds on our medians on Highway Fifty, and that just does not look well as our visitors come through Canyon City, and I'd love to see that get a little bit extra special attention if we could.
On that subject, can there be like some volunteer effort put together?
Well, that'd be kind of have to have volunteers in the middle of Highway Fifty because that's a liability.
Yeah, but you know, there's these cleanup projects all over on really like interstates. So I just wondered if that's an option.
CDOT is supposed to organize trash cleanup in the medians, not necessarily weed.
Okay. Yeah.
I think my final one is just that I noticed that almost every single department goal for twenty twenty-three had no mention whatsoever of the balance scorecard implementation. I believe the Police Department did, but I'm sure appreciate and love to see a little bit more of that incorporated because that is supposed to be a dominating factor for us really moving forward together in one way and is a way to help measure those goals that they make. Even if there are some goals that they already have here that would coordinate with the balance scorecard, let's give credit to that and make sure that is put in there. But otherwise, what an excellent work. Yeah.
And I think staff does need to be committed in our administrator for the for these documents. They are really comprehensive. They are, if you've ever put one together like this, they're they are just a nightmare because as you go through and change a little number in a spreadsheet, you then have to go through the whole document and make sure that everything is consistent, and it is it is quite an effort, and and it is appreciated.
Well done. You should every one of you for your participation and the work that you do. Really, really appreciate this a lot, Tammy, and you and your and your team especially. And Ryan, I know you're a really important part of that, too. I know I always overlook giving you the credit as well.
That's okay. The the department has to do a great job submitting these these budgets. You know, they they're very prudent about what they submit and, you know, thoughtful, you know. You know, we don't see large increases year over year because they're they're thinking about what they do and, you know, how best to use those funds, and we certainly appreciate that. It's always hard to cut things from the budget, but knowing, you know, what they're working on and that they're putting forward, you know, meaningful projects and meaningful requests certainly helps that. And of course, you know, Tammy, from a finance director's standpoint, keeping us all straight and making sure that all the numbers but balance at the end.
Thank you, man. Tammy, do you have any other additional final comments for us?
Yeah, thank you for taking the time to actually review the document.
We get gold stars.
Yeah, she could, you can get a gold star, but yeah.
Next time, I'll even know what I'm looking at better. Next time, I'll even know what I'm looking at better, so this is good. Very enlightening, but it was like, too dumb to know yet what to ask, so you're safe this time for me.
This time, okay, thanks for the warning.
Any other final comments from council? All right, well, in that case, I am going to, well, invite anyone from the public who wishes to speak. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. It says on my talking points to call for motion, but I don't believe we need a motion. There's just direction that has been given.
Yeah, there's no motion tonight. The ordinance for the budget will come before city council at the first meeting in November.
Excellent. Thank you again. Really, really appreciate everyone's work and contributions. And this meeting is adjourned.